Notary?
Here.
Rogal?
Here.
District number?
Mayor Kimball.
Here.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sunshine, notice?
Notice, I was getting a few into the public conference with the other public meetings.
Uh, we see Robert Cruz or fire chief.
You can pull the other stuff?
Huh?
Rob, we're ready, man.
To discuss Silver Lake Firehouse.
You're up.
With interim manager Kevin Esposito. Sorry, he's too much, they're ganged up.
I understand that there were some questions about Silver Lake Firehouse at an earlier meeting, and there seemed to be some things in the media that had indicated that there was something going on that I didn't know about. So I think it's a good time to kind of clear the air. I understand that there are funds available for the renovation of the firehouse that you have already approved. And the last, maybe two weeks ago, we would take Kevin and I along with Councilor Cazarelli, Councilman Kennedy, met up at the firehouse, looked at it. We didn't already know that we didn't already know that the property is in dire need of renovation before anyone can go back in that building. And when I say renovation, I mean from roof to the ground, it needs to be redone and brought up to code. I guess the point of this is to address any questions that you have. Since the money has already been approved, I feel I guess we can move the project forward. Is that my understanding?
Sure. Do we ever get a question from anyone on what we're supposed to do?
No, actually, the next step would be to have someone...
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gotten to that yet. Some financial like...
We need to know. And resolution to...
We would have to implement the design of the project.
Absolutely.
We bought $250,000 for that particular project. We all felt it was a muscle, not a moment based upon the sizes. And the fact that the upgrades that need to be made aren't really astronomical. The roof is in need of some work. The interior kitchen needs to be updated. The second floor needs some remediation, potentially of...
Yeah, well, I mean, we do have, we did have some water issues that got in through the leaks in the roof that have affected the structure internally. In my opinion, I would think, you know, you've broken this thing down to the existing exterior walls and whatever is available inside. Remediate whatever problems we may have. We don't, we're still hidden. And then we follow the renovation.
In the area of 74 men on the firehouse?
We're at 69 today. We just had one man retire February 1st. Now, the number we're at now, ma'am, is the highest we've been since, I think, 2009.
Okay.
That's a great question, and the answer to that would be strictly determined by budgets as we progress year to year. If all things stay the same, and we still continue to operate at the 11-man minimum we are presently operating at. We're getting closer to better, but we're not there. And I would say we probably are still looking at, based on what we have seen in the past three years, a potential for 25 percent closure of that same redevelopment. And that's a guess, but it's about what we're looking at.
How many men do you feel we need to keep? The three houses open without closing.
Well, it's truly depending on the minimum, mayor. And again, so, in, let me just check. In 2010, because of financial conditions, we went from 12 to 11. Now, 12 were allowed us to keep all three buildings open. So in '10, we reduced it to 11, and that started the closure situation that we...
Well, if we're still at 12, I think we operate with 74 men.
Yes.
So we replace the retirement.
That's correct.
As far as difference.
That's correct. But again, it's really dependent on the minimum because if they take time off, they are, we are subject to...
Yeah, well, I mean...
And we have to do that. But it certainly would help, of course. You know, yeah, the closer we get to that number, the...
Well, it would cut down on the oil if I'm also...
Yes.
Kevin, you have any questions?
No.
First of all, I am the councilperson of the first ward. And how dear a meeting be held and I not being asked to attend it. I think that was very crude, and I'm really disappointed. You have Councilman Cazarelli, who's in the third ward. Who's the other one that attended?
I...
Well, he's a councilman at large.
We requested it.
Why was I not there?
Okay, we requested it.
Let's, let's not, you didn't ask us...
Oh, you don't think I requested it? That this is my ward?
I don't know, whatever you did. Wait, I requested it.
You know what? You know what's been your wrong.
We're trying to rectify...
Mayor, yeah, I know, but tell me why. Tell me why.
I don't know. I didn't go to the meeting either, did I?
Well, then who ran the meeting? Mr. Esposito, did you run the meeting? Did you invite the people? You think it's right that the first ward councilperson was not there? Now, come on.
I'll have another meeting in a minute.
No, no, don't even do it. Just do what you have to do.
What do you want to do? Do you have anything else to say about this? Or you just want to holler?
Oh, no, no, that's right. Just holler. If it was you, you'd be hollering too.
No, I would be here if I wanted.
Okay? Oh, excuse me, the mayor.
Yeah, right, excuse you.
All I'm trying to say to you is, okay, we had that firehouse there. It was run down. Nothing was ever done with it. And that's why it got so bad.
Okay.
All right? And we need a firehouse there.
You're absolutely correct.
All right? And we need a firehouse.
Yes.
And if I want to scream and yell, I think it was my prerogative that I should be there as the first ward councilperson.
Okay.
That's my ward. That's all I'd like to say.
John? Vinnie?
No.
Steve?
I want to know a couple of quick things. Having grown up in the firehouse is Silver Lake being one of it. One thing about Silver Lake is it's pretty small.
Yes. The living space is certainly...
Living space, but also the vehicular space. I mean, are we thinking about opening up the...
We looked at that, and it's something that, if it's possible through whatever, you know, engineering we need to do, we can do that.
Okay.
It is a tight squeeze getting in and out. We looked at that very closely the other day.
The other thing I was trying to understand is, we only had one vehicle there, right?
That's correct.
From a standard operating procedural policy, whatever we call it at this point, before anything can happen, we need to have two vehicles at a site, or how do we deal with that? I mean, what is the SOP for somebody going into a fire?
No, it's more, it's more, it's amassing enough people on the fire ground, not necessarily where they're coming from in this period of time.
Right.
And the time is first arriving, four minutes. Late alarm is eight minutes. So, you know, pretty much anywhere in town, it's eight minutes.
I think what Steve is trying to get at, maybe it's, wasn't there a rule, a firing rule, one man in, two men out?
Two men in, two men out, yes. That's a safety issue, yes.
And the way we man, my understanding, the way we man is like three on a truck.
One officer, two men.
So in that case, you'd have to have two trucks there, at least at that point, to have two in, two out? Or just one in, one out?
Well, on the fire ground, within that period of time, right? You know, there is...
I'm just trying to understand, like, because I mean...
Technically, technically, there's two men on the fire ground, and they're by themselves. According to the recommendation of the NFPA, they're supposed to wait until the arrival of that safety team.
The safety team.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to do. I just want to make sure everyone understands that there are some procedural things that limit us, as well as manpower things.
No, and it's a very difficult standard to meet. But, you know, we do our best to do that, you know? And again, it's more of the collection of bodies at the fire ground within that period of time.
I know that's the rule, but I'm sure if the fire department goes to the scene and there's somebody in the house that has to be taken out, they're going to go there.
Well, then, at that point, even the standard says that do what you need to do. Absolutely.
I don't want people to think that, to understand that. They're going to work from the outside mostly, as long as there's nobody inside.
That is the technically, the technical interpretation. I'm not sure.
I guess the other question was, if we got to full strength, I'm fairly confident we'd cut down in overtime, as well as allow us to man that most of the time.
No, absolutely. No, again, any addition to the overall staffing does help reduce. Again, you know, you can look at patterns and, you know, but generally, you would see an improvement at all points in time with that. Whether it achieves the optimum, I'm not going to stand here and, you know, say that it's going to eliminate everything, but it certainly does add to the improvement, for sure.
Thanks.
Okay, our next step is, let's move on and get the local R2Qs or R2Ps. I think we get a price on that building. Make sure we have the money and then move on with the repair.
Absolutely.
I mean, if the council wants it.
Yeah. Okay.
Is a vote required here, or we're kind of, I guess, we're ready to go with this, as far as moving forward?
With the assessment. That's a good question.
I think we're going to need a resolution to go for the R2Qs.
Yeah, probably.
Kelly, can we move on tonight?
Sure.
Okay, we're under new business, all right?
For the design or for the... For the assessment.
For the, to find out the repair of the...
You want an assessment, all right? You want to know what it's going to cost us to repair. Yeah, you're going to need plans, because what the chief and we discovered was... It's structural. It's structural. So we need an assessment, which is going to be important.
I'll put it, I'm under new business.
Have a stand. Okay, great. Again, we anticipate that this is going to take a year to kind of get to where we want to go, but we do need to take that first steps.
We have to start.
Yeah, okay, great. I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, chief.
I have one question for you, chief.
Yes.
That resolution you have on about, I don't know where it is, does it have the functional responsibility? Does that doesn't cost us anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Resolución number four.
Yeah, no, I had mailed him a letter. I spoke with him, and I had mailed him a letter and asked if he had any professional concerns that we needed to address. And he did not respond with anything that we needed to do.
Okay.
I did get the letter back from him. I forwarded it to Kelly, and he's, once the resolution is adopted, he will be the medical director for the... So that position is kind of required by the statute that governs TMS. We're a little bit behind in the presentation there.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get you this later.
Thank you, chief.
Two minutes?
My minutes are this time, everybody.
The regulator upgrade project is underway. Bellevue Avenue and Woodland Street are 75 percent complete at this time. Hilton Street and Geraldine will begin this week. Estimated completion on all the upgrades to the regulators will be at the end of the month, hopefully, where permitting. Road projects, there was an initial pre-con meeting. Once again, we're just waiting for the weather to break. All the road work will begin, hopefully, at the end of this month as well. The generator upgrades at the senior center and the firehouse will start, they were delayed because they're not able to pour the concrete pans until the snow melts. Without any further weather conditions that would permit, we could get that done also by the end of the month. Our recreation department is also going to host the Easter egg hunt on March 28th, Saturday, at 11:00 a.m. It's usually a nice event, and hopefully, we get good weather that day as well. Anything else to report?
Kevin, as far as the roads, you think that maybe you can get in contact with somebody from the county? Union Avenue from the Greylock Parkway to the Nutley border, I really think it needs to be recreated. I mean, it's beyond filling in those potholes. You know, if you can contact somebody and see what can be done for Union Avenue from Greylock Way to the Nutley border. Also, there was a segment tonight on the news. I know all of New Jersey's having this problem right now, this time of year. It was called the pothole problem, and all the towns, and we certainly have the problem, but all the towns do. Do we have a plan here with these potholes?
Actually, they started...
I know it still smell out there.
They started filling potholes today. The repair is available now. They're going to be difficult to hot patch. So they're starting to fill the potholes today. We also have the ability for residents to report potholes on our website now. People are doing that. What happens is, once they come through, before then, now the public works and approve this out there and makes the repair.
Thank you. That's it.
Steve?
Just to reiterate what Councilman Cazarelli was talking about. For every student that's not a Bellevue resident, we're paying $12,000, $13,000. So I mean, if we have 100 students, there's 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars sitting there. Just please communicate with the domicile investigator, as well as Mr. Tom Coe, and let's make sure the Bellevue money goes to Bellevue students. Bellevue Avenue, I think that's a state road?
Portions of the state, but not just the town.
County? Again, county, it's horrendous.
Well, the county has plans to pay Bellevue. Thank God. That's on our list.
That and Franklin are the two worst for me. Yeah, Kev, with the potholes, where we get in the hot mix from?
We are required through the state contract to go to Jefferson to get the hot box.
So by the time they get back, it's cold?
They put it in the hot box, so it does, you know, it does remain hot, but it's not the most efficient way. Unfortunately, we are bound by the bid process.
So can we go out to bid for that?
Yeah.
Okay. You've got to go up to Mount Hope for that? We could go right here to North Gas School. So we're talking at least an hour up, an hour back, an hour sit? I mean, it's got to be more or less effective to get it over.
Oh, definitely is.
So can we put specs together, go to bid for that? For that, please. Thank you.
That's it. Thanks, Kevin. Communications?
A resolution of support for towns impacted by the Gilford pipeline received from rural of Quogue. Be required received from Bellevue, parents, and alumni association for permission to sponsor a tag day on April 4th and October 24th and 25th of location for that town.
Make a motion, approve it.
Second.
Councilmember, Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Street Moberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball? Yes. See request received from the Nutley-Goville Clums State and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee for permission to conduct the Clums State Parade on October 11th at 1:30 p.m. in Bellevue High School. Down Groffman Street, Franklin Avenue, Hopey Moore, and any and everything.
Make a motion, approve it.
Second.
Put the vote.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Take that vote.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Street Moberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Will it support hearing, second final reading?
Orders number one for public hearing and orders to hand the revised general ordinances of the Council of Bellevue, Chapter 8-16, the MTC parking spaces.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing?
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Street Moberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, close the public hearing, move it for final adoption?
Second.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Street Moberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, open public participation?
Second.
He said both.
Put the vote.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Street Moberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Phil, this is Frank Antoni, I'm a hospital examiner. I noticed this week, I'm pretty sure the company that goes around and takes the branches off the cherry blossoms trees are coming around.
Yes.
He's taking the prime ones. Do you think maybe this year you could tell him to trim the shooters off the trees? I mean, we're giving him prime shooters to do whatever he wants with those trees. Because last year, after I complained, then you had to send Public Works out to do that. Why can't he do it? We're giving him these shooters. Let him trim the trees and get shooters off the ground.
Can we contact them? I have his number.
Thank you.
Fairway Park, I'll need you to... Yeah, we haven't, we also don't say we haven't. Put my attention at there's cars in the parking lot of the playground there, and things are going on inside the cars. And the parent was telling me about it. There's kids going through there.
And the fairway?
Fairway Park. Is it there in the ornament, ornaments that are acted dark? The cars are going to be there. If we could start...
I think so. Yeah.
I think there's a lot of things that are starting to develop here that shouldn't be in there.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I want to address this. It's got several names in Northeast redevelopment plan, the Emmett Center, or whatever it's called, Wachemont Avenue Development Project. The more we look into this, the more serious, serious problems we have here. Mr. Alex Alstrom, who's taking credit for putting this project together, in his lengthy report here, one of the things he states here, says the township and state governments support the Emmett Center and will, the word "will", build a train station at the bottom of the Emmett Center. This council...
Okay, that's wrong. That's second to nothing.
All right, that's wrong. There's other things in this report that are, it's going to take, right from here to New York, going to take 28 minutes. And someone gave me this picture. There was a meeting held in Mr., it looks like Mr. Esposito of golf, as I believe, last January.
That's correct. And it was pictures taken with the...
With these Chinese investors and all that. Was that allowed to be a private meeting?
Well, they came in to discuss the possibility of this, of development in the area. Yes, I think it could be.
Yeah.
Well, it says in there that one of the newspapers, or the mayor says he believed it was allowed to be in private because it was discussing real estate. But it wasn't township-owned real estate. This is privately-owned real estate, so why would it...
It's a developer coming in that wants to develop on our town.
Well, you've got another developer come in last month, and he addressed his proposal publicly here.
They also sort of addressed it publicly. Yeah, they were publicly told about it.
Do you remember that?
Well, that was just the last meeting.
No, 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 they were here at the very beginning.
Publicly?
Publicly. Over here.
Well, I don't recall that. They went before the...
And that concept and everything, right?
They went before the planning board.
They were here to...
And we're really strict on that. Well, you've got some serious problems with this. The, number one, in this testimony and all this, and all these developers saying, the trend is for all this high-density development. Because people go around and live in the suburbs, they're moving back to the cities and all that. Again, I don't know if any of you read the investment and business pages. This is just from January of this year in the business topic. A survey of New Jersey bankers, that's the people who own the money, shows that a significant share either strongly agree or somewhat agree that the multifamily real estate market is now a bubble. Something I've been predicting for years. And it goes on to say, there's other reports. The reason is, and I had the experience a couple of years ago, I couldn't sell a house, eight contracts were signed, they couldn't get money for the mortgage. They couldn't get the mortgage. So that's why they're moving into these rental units. But we're overbuilding. Because most of the development in New Jersey the last three years have been rental units because people couldn't get mortgages. Now that the mortgage situation is easy enough, people moving back into their homes. This is just from two weeks ago, in the business section. The McMansion era has returned. And it's all about these young people moving into the rental units And it's all about these young people moving into the rental units because they couldn't get money. Now that loans have become more common, "The recession was supposed to usher in a return to the dense, urban, and walkable. Instead, the opposite has occurred." So all these predictions, and everybody, because everybody, the majority of people still want the American dream, their little house with their backyard for their kids. They were forced into these high-rise rental units because of temporarily market conditions. So don't fall for this thing that we're going to have all this development. Once again, I don't know, about nine months, a year ago, my wife called me because I think it was 60 Minutes was on. I don't know if any of you know what China did. They built a tremendous amount of cities, complete cities, high-rise buildings, shopping malls, new roads, everything. Not one single tenant in any of the stores, in any of the buildings, and all. So, you know, we've got all this pie in the sky. I don't know if anybody remembers about 20, 25 years ago, the great urban renewal in Asbury Park. And they condemned all these people, one of them happening to be my customer, who they took her home to eminent domain, and these developers went up with this high-rise steal. The steal rusted there for 20 years, okay? And then, again, all this money and tax credit, then the other people moved out of the town there. The other thing, very, very serious, is the state of New Jersey, the officer comptroller, with tax abatements and pilot programs. It's quoted from his report. "New Jersey's municipal tax abatement program is pulling critical funding away from school districts and leaving taxpayers to pick up the cost." The comptroller noted that municipal incentives for granting abatements increased since funds collected from pilots are not subject to property tax caps. It goes on to say. "Abatements artificially depress the ratable property base in the municipality, leaving neighboring municipalities to shoulder the county tax burden." It also states, "The standards for designating redevelopment areas are loosely applied and rarely reviewed by anyone." Number three, "Developers seeking abasement may, without repercussion, overpromise benefits that never materialize." And information concerning abatement agreements is not published in a transparent manner or centralized location for the public to review and analyze at the abatements. Now, in regards to pilots, the state comptroller, this is not the state comptroller. I don't know if any of you know, I think some of you know, Skorintian Hollaback...
I'm sorry, just can you finish it?
Just the last thing. Skorintian Hollaback, it's a big regional law firm in New Jersey. Very, people know it. They did a report. "Is the pilot light going out in New Jersey?" And here's some of their quotes. "The pilot payments distort municipal incentives at the expense of county, school districts, county, and other taxpayers." "The information concerning these agreements is not published in transparent manner or centralized, making it impossible for the public to compare or calculate the effect or be fully aware of those agreements." Also states, "It directly affects stakeholders that are not involved in abatement decision process in an accurate fashion. And follow-up at the municipal level on these agreements is lacking accountability and feedback." So any sensible person, and most taxpayers in Belleville are, this project should be not amended, not reconsidered or anything. Should be thrown out the window immediately. It's not for Belleville. And throughout this report, right, this Alex Alstrom, he keeps you forward to Belleville City. We're not a city. We're a township. And I can go over that 27-page report, pull out all the inconsistencies or the wrong statements in there. So hopefully you people will represent the people who elected you and not these wealthy out-of-town developers who want to make money in this town and have no concern at all for the public at all. So please.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. I'm in very much in agreement with a lot of what Mr., if not all of what Mr. Frank Tantoni just said. And also in the Matthew Boxer Report 2010 that was offered, requested by the governor and the Assembly and Senate, it states that redevelopment should be used only as a last resort to develop properties. I happen to feel as though the Jergens property fits that mold. I think more than likely the Jacobs property fits that mold. The Kitty property does not fit that mold. And the Kitty property is the reason for the grab and the willingness to do everything else. And the idea that you would ever have a commuter line that would get you to New York in 20 minutes is insane. It's laughable. So, and putting the power lines underground that they're expanding, insane. 90 feet this development is from those high-tension lines. They service those lines via helicopter now. I'm right outside, I hear it when I'm in my office, but they're frequent. Helicopters buzzing on those lines. 90 feet. If you double the size of those buildings and you knock them over flat, that's how far you're supposed to have residential from those lines. So 1,000 feet is what's recommended. And quite frankly, the zoning on the Kitty property would be insane to change. And if it were ever considered by the planning board, the council, or anyone, I would hope that the town would consider going to referendum on an issue that could fundamentally change the township forever to a city. And that no redevelopment clause that would circumvent the public or the zoning board would be allowed to be passed at our expense. And the future legacy of all that residential expense. So what I'd like to ask the council is, what is the procedure at this point? With the planning board having bounced it back with little or no alteration to you, I assume that you, the council, have to make recommendations...
By next meeting, we will have our recommendations.
You'll have it back to the planning board, I assume that's, however? Okay. That's great.
I just want to...
Yeah.
I, I, I just want to make sure. You're not saying not to develop the Kitty property at all, are you?
Oh, of course not.
Okay.
The Kitty property needs to be developed commercially. I would love to see something like a small Clifton Commons coming in. That's 23.7 acres. There's unlimited amounts of things you can do in there. And it's also riddled with monitoring wells that are forever going to be in place by the DEP.
Okay. I just have one misunderstanding.
No, please.
Wait a minute.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Nick Candino. I reside at 72 Bell Street. I'm here today on behalf of Belleville resident Phil Ross, my daughter Nicole cannot attend tonight. We are all committee members for the Northern New Jersey chapter of Walk Now for Autism Speaks. It's my understanding, I'll be voting on a resolution a little later on tonight as pertains to Autism Awareness Month, which is in April, and the Light It Up Blue campaign, which is April 2nd. Without going into many details, autism spectrum disorder and autism are general terms that are used for a complex disorder of brain development. Nationally, 1 in 68 children are diagnosed with autism, 1 in 42 boys, 1 in 189 girls. Here in New Jersey, the numbers are much more drastic as 1 in 45 children are affected and 1 in 28 boys here in New Jersey. When I first got involved with this committee around five years ago, the number was 1 in 110 children. So this number has really jumped. And it's very important in paramount that we bring awareness to everyone and especially in the township here where many people are affected, many people that we may know, people in this room who know people who are affected by autism. In 2007, the United Nations adopted a Light It Up Blue campaign, which was instituted to shine a light on the fact that autism is a global health crisis. And by passing this resolution tonight, we'll be joining many local communities as well as the countries worldwide who participate in this event. Some landmarks that participate is the Empire State Building right across the river here, Chrysler Redeemer in Rio de Janeiro, the Ministry of Education in Ukraine, the Nelson Mandela Bridge in South Africa, and many, many more. The Upper House in Sydney, Australia as well. So I'm here just to ask that you pass this resolution tonight, making us able to reach out to our own community and make this autism awareness. It's a night of lighting it up blue where we'll light up the Township Hall in blue and/or many buildings and people in their own residence can put a blue light bulb in their home on April 2nd just to show support and awareness of autism. If anyone on the council has any questions of me, I can be reached through Joe Longbow and also Mr. Cazarelli, also will be able to get in touch with me. And I'll be happy to answer any questions and just pay any group, helping develop any kind of programs to light it up blue as well as residents and make this information available. I appreciate your time.
So each year, I know that the council did pass a resolution in support of autism. Especially, I know my wife and I, the women's club, they always wanted a resolution, and it was passed every year, so we do support.
I appreciate, I mean, we have our children in town that we have in classes in town, and we also have to send some out. Fortunately, I'm not affected directly with this. This is just something that I've been involved with for many years. You can walk at the MetLife Stadium on June 14th. Anyone who visits autism, walknowforautism speaks dot com to find any information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
132 Franklin Street, Belleville. In regards to the lovely Silver Lake Firehouse, number one, it's been going on closed now for two, close to almost three years now. There was a gas leak at the closed firehouse the other day. How did that happen? Why weren't the residents around the area told about it? And in the last couple of years when it's been closed, has the heat been on? Because if the heat hasn't been on, who's been paying for that? Has the town been paying for that? Because if the heat hasn't been on, pipes could have been broken. And we live literally right next door to it. So that needs to be addressed. And since this money has already been allotted, what's the holdup? I mean, I understand that, you know, the design has to be done. It's a firehouse. It doesn't have, don't, excuse me.
Excuse me, can I comment for a second?
Go ahead. Don't be disrespectful, though, please.
No, no. God forbid. The community has a responsibility, just as we do. So we have to go through a process. And in fact, it was a process that took us almost a year to get the money, to allocate that money and get it bonded, which happens in...
Right, which was last year.
Now, the next piece is, we've got to go out for a request for a poll on getting somebody to assess it for us.
Okay, how long will that take?
As soon as we can do it, we can do it. Actually, we're going to pass a resolution, I think, at the end of this meeting to do that. And then you have to put it out for a request. So there is a process that we have to go through by law to do that for you.
Okay, I understand.
And we started it tonight.
Right, that's all well and good.
Actually, we started it over a year ago. And I know Vinnie is on for it, and I think most everybody up here is for getting it renovated because it's a big part of our history in Belleville. And this is something that we started doing well over here.
Right, but has... Right, has the heat been on though, well this time?
I have no idea. That's something I can't answer.
The heat was on to prevent the pipes from freezing?
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And no disrespect to the council, but next time you have a meeting about Silver Lake, include Ms. Burke. And if you, if you don't respect her, then you don't respect the people of this town. Thank you.
Victor Fuji, 61 Concentrator. I made a statement after the last meeting and I misspoke. I had said on our test to qualify for the board that do planners have to tell the truth? And I said, "No." That was the wrong statement. It's actually, do you have to believe planners? And to that, the answer is no. Also, I objected to Mr. Stepp's repeated references to property as being blighted. That is no longer the correct term. There's a copy there for all of you. If you look on page two of that document where I underlined it, I've only printed two of eight pages. The new statute calls for the area to be designated an area of redevelopment rather than the former often derogatory designation of blighted area or remedied area. So things have been changed. And on a positive note, yesterday morning I called about an enormous pothole, partial collapse payment on Carpenter Street. Roach called me back about an hour later and said that it would be fixed today, which it was. So thank you to the DPD. And now that the agenda is put on the website, that's great. Also, I had signed up for that notification. They sent an email about what the agenda, tell me the agenda is up to. So that's also great. So thank you.
Now, real draws 95 Bell Street. I just have a few questions to ask and hope. First of all, just based on what I've been reading in the papers, so I figured, you know, the papers normally give you half the truth, so I figured let me stop here and hopefully get the right answers. As you know, in a real estate contract, whenever you buy a piece of property, there's a clause there called buyer beware. And I just noticed that the taxes at that Roach property are $72,000 for 18 acres. Now, down the road to Geriatric Center, I know it's a cleaner piece of property, but it's nine acres of land and it's $98,000. I'm just wondering why the tax rate, maybe Mr. Spada did open and explain that later. And what is the timeframe of the remediation? I know it's been passed already. And is it going to take a year, two years, three years? Because I'm looking at the amount of tax dollars that you lose on every year that your property is sitting there. And the DEP, I know, is brutal in holding up these properties. Now, I'm just curious as to, based on what I read in the paper, as to why Roach is being a good neighbor to Township of Belleville, which I hope they are, and why they're giving you the property for that amount? Which will bring me to the second part of the other article I read in the paper in regards to this property of Walter Kitty. I read that word contractor or builder, developer claims that 1 out of 9 units is going to be a child in it. But 4,000 units, a lot of children, I don't think we could fit them right now. I'm not opposed to any development in this town. But my question is, when was the last time the master plan has been revised? And is this in accordance to the current master plan? Have we done any survey or anyone done any survey currently of the rentals in the township of children going right now to find out? Maybe 50% of Belleville's rentals have given us an idea because, I mean, renters come and go, you may have two, three, but I can't believe that only 1 out of 9 rentals would be a child in there. And I'm hoping that whatever happens with this project, the developer has to do something like put a school in there or something. There's no way. I mean, you know what a school's going to cost today. It's, you know, I don't think we can afford it. I'm hoping the tax rateables would cover that. And there was also in our comment about firefighting equipment, which I don't think we can handle 50 stories. I believe that currently Washington Avenue is zoned for 8 to 10 stories, which I think is suitable and reasonable, it's not out of proportion with the master plan. And also, there was another article in the paper about a month ago talking about a lot of development going on in the Hudson River, about a lot of high-rises going up. So basically Belleville would be in competition with those buildings. So what I'm afraid of, to be honest with you, is a developer's in there to make money. Let's face it. He just wants to make the bottom line. What happens when he does not get his rentals? They keep coming down and down and down. And the reason I'm bringing that up is because that's the problem many of you had with Branchford Gardens some years ago, where the owner neglected the property and you had to actually take him to court and have him arrested. And I don't want to see the same thing happen there. Thank you for your time. So if anybody wants to answer me, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I, we're looking at the Roach property, not at this time, but we will be interested in developers coming in. If you have one that wants to come in and give us a proposal, we'll...
No. I'm only in residential now.
We didn't, we didn't sign an agreement. No, no. Just so you know, we didn't sign an agreement.
Oh, okay. No, but based on the paper, you know, if you read it online, that's only half the truth again.
We didn't sign an agreement. And the master plan, the master plan was last done 2006. But it does, I do have to get redone. We do have to tweak it again. Hopefully this year, we're going to look at it.
So I'm just going by the, you know, old west...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ball score.
Yeah, it's almost 10 years old. It's about time to look at it.
Just one question. The manager, about the equity in the property, 18 acres versus 9 acres. In the assessed valuation of the properties.
Your specific question, you want to know...
The one, the Geriatric Center, the 520 Belleville Avenue? That's nine acres?
Yes.
And Roach is what? I mean, Walter Kitty, how many acres?
24.
But why not Walter Kitty, the Roach property? That's...
19 acres.
But why the difference in 90,000 versus 70,000?
The settlement with the Hoppner Roach was done in 2006 to 2010. Their number was set through an appeal, a judgment, tax court settlement, okay? It has since been under appeal by both parties. And we could wind up with an increase in assessed value.
Right, but that's what I'm looking at, the numbers. Because I see Walter Kitty's only paying 52,000 for 26 acres. Hold on, I'll tell you, I got it, I got it from your office. Wait a minute.
Mary, all your time's up.
No problem.
Arlene Shore, 75 Ross Place. I would just like to stand, and I would like to affirm that Raymond Gennaro, as the chair of the planning board, leads us with responsibility, conducts the meetings in a manner that anyone present would agree is something that is not to be defamed in our laws. But to support someone who has led our planning board in a positive and constructive manner, and his personal integrity and his public appearances as far as his conducting of meetings, I affirm, because I have had the opportunity to work with him for a number of years. Thank you.
I mean, I agree with you. I read, I read and heard some comments about the planning board and Mr. Gennaro. And they're very upset. If somebody has knowledge that there's something going on illegally, they should go to the prosecution resource. Anybody that puts their time involuntarily on any of these boards should be commended. Anybody, everybody in this town can be on a board. Alls they have to do is contact their councilperson in that board, give them a resume, and when there's an open, they will be considered. But to condemn those people is ridiculous. And I really do stick up for the boards. Yes, sir.
Hi, Frank Fleischman, 132 Franklin Street, Belleville. I wanted to support my wife, of course, and what she had said. But also, I wanted to just note that the way that the firehouse is now, I know that Chief Caruso was talking about the possibility of widening the entrance, the exit, the door, basically. And she's recently get in and out of the problem. I mean, I've seen it go in and out all the time. I saw it, they didn't seem to be a problem. Also, Councilor Cazarelli saying that you may revisit the master plan this year. I think that would be great. What I would like to suggest, and I hope that I'm pronouncing this correctly, I'd like to suggest maybe a CHREX, which is the week-long or like intensive planning session where you bring in all the people who have an interest, as well as citizens, to give their input on what would happen, you know, what they would like to see essentially. I think citizen participation is a big part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Florence, I thought I was going to get away with you.
No, this is our town clerk, Kelly. I've always asked about her son, Jack. I think he's in the audience tonight, isn't he?
He's falling asleep back there.
So he could see you.
Jack, you here?
He's adorable. Very nice.
Make a motion, post public hearing?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Make a motion, move to dissent agenda?
Number four, I'd like to, an explanation of that.
Then number four. Okay. Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Rule Resolution number four?
Second.
I think we want an explanation on this.
Is there any bodies?
Yeah, Bobby, Bobby asked that question before.
There's none, okay, that's all I know.
I'm there.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Rule Resolution number seven?
I pulled, I'm default no on it.
The question I have on this real quick is, can we get the money back for the ed?
No, no, it's written that way. I don't know which way. I thought it was changed a long time ago, that they were supposed to pay for the ads and stuff, but I guess not.
No, is it possible for us to be reimbursed for the ed after they sell?
We can try.
Are you too late for this one? We'll try. Make the request.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Make a motion, move to resolution number eight?
Second. This is just to bring awareness as fast as we can.
Quick move on.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Make a motion to take resolution one off the table. Oh, no, resolution two off the table. I'll second that. Quick move on.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Take no part.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes. I make a motion to approve resolution number two.
Second.
With the amendments to the contract with the approval of the PVA union. Quick move on.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Take no part.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes. I make a motion to do an assessment for the Franklin Street Firehouse.
RFQs, what RFQs?
RFQs. Do we hear it?
Second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kibble?
Yes.
Yeah, I have new business. I too want to commend Raymond Venero. He's a gentleman, he did his job. And for the people that go on that Belleville forum and they will not put their names out there, shame on them. That's all I have to say.
That's good. Jeff does put his name out there.
I did not mention any names, councilman, as usual.
I'm just saying, he does.
Yeah, I stand behind it.
I give, I give.
Well.
What's your name on the number, break?
I don't have a name.